We're at 7:04 and we're here for the purposes of discussing the ongoing development of a renewal, AREA. Would everybody stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? We'll do away with that piece of business. Thanks very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks very much. Let's see. Suzanne probably knows as much as anybody in this room about AREA agreements. So if I do anything that veers off the tracks, you're going to correct me. Jeff Trexler is here from Dunbarton. Jeff probably knows as much as anybody else in the room, if not more. He's probably about AREA. So Jeff, if I say anything that's inconsistent and you want to correct me, I would invite you to do so.
Otherwise, shut up.
And I won't be...
Otherwise, shut up.
I won't be the least bit offended. It would be nice to hear somebody else other than me talk for a while. I may go off page a little bit. The slides are simply a guide for me, more so than it is necessarily for you to read. So that everybody has one, and I think I've got more than enough here, I will pass out a copy of the existing AREA agreement.
Thank you.
I assume everybody here has one.
I have one.
I'll take the hard copies. They have the trampoline. You can give it back to you after.
Oh, that's hard to keep it.
Thank you.
I'm supposed to make sure you get them before you get to your chair.
Thank you.
An AREA agreement, or, and this is simply for the purpose of setting the stage, is an authorized regional enrollment area. The purpose of an AREA agreement, which are created by statute, are to allow communities to bind together for the purposes of educating their students. Not all communities in New Hampshire have the population, the resources necessary to develop the capital to educate their students in grades K through 12. So what the state has done is created a variety of different frameworks in which communities can join together for the purposes of making sure that all students in all communities have the edu-- an equal educational opportunity. In this particular case, the relatively smaller communities, although we're all equals among equals, of Dunbarton and New Boston have their own community schools, in each case K through six. And in those communities, they receive services from the SAU, as does the town of Goffstown. And then, once their students reach seventh grade, they tuition their students to Goffstown. The AREA agreement basically is a business agreement.
I think one good point to make on that is, once they tuition their kids to Goffstown, they are then, in the state's eyes, considered to be Goffstown students. And that's using the calculation of many things, including the prorated SAU bills.
And people hold a class on all of those things. Because it's far more complicated than we can touch on this evening. But keep things a really important point, is once a student arrives in Goffstown, they are considered one of ours. The students, their families, their guardians, whoever they may be, have all the same rights and privileges that a student from Goffstown does. They should and are, they should be and are treated thus saying. So if a Goffstown student has an issue and has a process to resolve that issue, whatever, a discipline issue, and they don't think that discipline has been administered fairly, they have a process to go through. That same process would be available to a Goffstown student who lives in Dunbarton or a Goffstown student who lives in Boston, simply because our, the school board's policies apply to each and every student. If the student's 18, they get to speak for themselves. If they are less than 18, their families are more than welcome to participate in that discussion, not our decision, but somebody else's. The term of the present AREA agreement will conclude in 2014. At this time, and actually for about the last year and a half, is that right, Jeff? We've been working on developing a successor agreement, which will allow the tuitioning of students from Dunbarton and New Boston to Goffstown going forward into the future. Presently, there is an AREA committee that has been meeting that is comprised of three representatives from each of the districts. Each one of the communities has come forward with proposed changes to the existing AREA agreement. I think it's fair to say that there are no wholesale changes to that agreement. Primarily, there are things that seek to make modifications that are either significant or not particularly significant in the language of the agreement, to clarify things, some of which we've already done, or to make it more clear how the AREA agreement is to be administered. We depend, all of our communities depend upon the business office to administer the AREA agreement. We wrote it, they have to follow it. No matter how hard we worked at developing it, it's pretty clear over the last 10 years that we've learned that even though we knew exactly what we wanted to happen, we didn't give a good roadmap for somebody else to follow what we wanted to happen. So part of our effort, as sitting at the table presently, is to fix it up so it's clear to somebody else who picks up that document, exactly what they're supposed to do. Let's see if I can go to the next one. All right. We've done this. We've talked a little bit about purposes.
Excuse me, can I just ask a quick question?
Yes, please.
Is it 2013-14 school year you're talking about, or 14-15 school year you're talking about?
The end of the 13-14. So June 30th, 2014. Presently, this is sort of how the basic numbers flesh out. These are the enrollments by MBMS and GHS schools from each one of the sending communities. This represents the tuition and the rental charge assessed through the AREA agreement. Now, these are based upon 2011 numbers, like last completed year. They don't speak to anything in the past or anything in the future. It's solely for the purposes of offering a snapshot. And everything in this presentation is, again, designed to look at to that year, the year we just concluded, 11-12, as sort of the base and representative year. Any questions before I jump on? And I'm going to tell you that when the, Jeff, this is for you more than anybody else because you're working. These numbers aggregate to your total tuition. Okay? So one, this is, this number is teased out of the aggregate. Here's where we presently stand today. Dunbarton is, has been having an ongoing dialogue with its neighbor, Bo, about developing and has developed an AREA plan, which would allow Dunbarton to tuition their students to that district. At some point, and Jeff, I don't know if you have a date yet, I don't know that it's important, but at some point, that plan will be presented to the State Department of Education for their review and approval. If approved by the Department of Education, that plan will be presented to the Dunbarton voters in March. Simultaneous to that effort going on, Dunbarton and New Boston and Goffstown have been working on developing a successor agreement to the existing AREA agreement. Dunbarton has represented that both of these agreements, should they be approved by the State Department of Education, would be on the ballot for their voters to select from in March. And I'm not going to say anymore about that because I don't know enough about the details of how it works. At some point, the Dunbarton School Board will make a decision about how to present their warrant articles to their voters. At the same time, New Boston and Goffstown will present a warrant article to its voters with regard to the AREA agreement. And each one of the communities will have the opportunity to vote on that warrant article. It gets a little interesting after that, or it could get a little interesting after that, because in order for an AREA agreement to become effective, all three of the communities, or all of, let me rephrase that, all of the communities' parties to that agreement must vote in the affirmative. So if Goffstown voted in the affirmative, New Boston voted in the affirmative, and the voters of Dunbarton elected to vote in favor of the Bo proposal, there is some question of what would happen. I believe that we'd have to go back to the drawing board and sit down with a community of New Boston in that instance, and craft an agreement with them, which would allow us to continue tuitioning their students and have a smaller or fewer members AREA agreement.
So can I ask a question?
Yes.
So you said the voters in Goffstown will go to the vote on that in March also?
Yes. In order for any AREA agreement to be adopted, all of the communities who are party must have it on the ballot at the same time, and all of the communities must vote in the affirmative, again, in order for it to have effect.
I have one more question.
Yes.
So I don't remember the historical part. Have we done that? When was the last time voters did that?
2003?
It was 2004.
It was 2004. We sat around on a lot of Saturdays, and a lot of other nights, and developed the current AREA agreement. Since then, there have been things that have changed. One of the vehicles has not changed. There have been questions that have arisen. And there is a vehicle in the existing AREA agreement that allows any community to say, hey, listen, we need to get together again, sit down, because there is an issue. And I think, I think we've done that three times. In two cases, we came to closure, and there was clarification given. In the third case, we did come to closure, but practice was modified to reflect what we tacitly agreed to. So I would say that, with the exception of a current issue that's pending, we have come, we have successfully brought to closure any ARE, any issues that have risen out of the AREA agreement over the last eight years. Have I misstated anything? Remember, you're supposed to keep me in line, and it's okay.
Remember, I wasn't on the board.
But I believe that you're an attentive listener and participant in your community, and if I miss something, I trust you'll straighten me out. And this is also true, like I indicated for New Boston, because it's got a little bit of discussion, but Dunbarton also engaged in a dialogue with their community. I believe that both of those communities did surveys in preparation for this dialogue, in order to get some feedback from their communities about what their issues or concerns Boston has brought forward proposals that are reflective of the feedback that they got from their community, and really, they're sort of focused on the operational piece of what goes on in the Goffstown School District. And they are focused on things that are policy issues. If you remember, and again, I'm going to point to you because you made a great point, that once a student is here, they're a Goffstown student. And one of the concerns that came out of surveys is, you know, we aren't sure as sending districts that we have the same rights, privileges, and benefits. And so some of the rights, privileges, and benefits, and some of the processes that are available through policy for things like redress and response, are going to likely appear in some form in a renewed AREA agreement. It won't be a departure from anything that's always been true. It simply will be, here's a document, here's a contract that people have agreed to, and in it, people have placed what are essentially the pathways that all students and their families have with regard to any issues that might arise in this school district in the education of their students.
Question? Questions?
Yes, I'm sorry.
What happens if the Goffstown voters don't approve the new agreement?
There's no new agreement.
So it goes back to what it was?
No. If there's no new agreement, then you sit down and you start working on a new agreement. There is no provision in the existing agreement for it to continue beyond 2014. So it creates a, if you go back, oh, either 10 years, you will remember sort of an ongoing, that lasted for almost 20 years, issue between Bedford and Manchester about how are we going to build our own schools? Will the communities support it? Or tuitioning students? And it got a little crazy at the end, because there really wasn't anything in place that clearly spoke to, what do we do? And when people sit down and make plans, and this is no less true of our communities than it was of them at the time, our ability to have a vision for all of the possibilities for things that may occur at some point in the future is limited, because we're all sitting at the table, we're all listening very carefully, and we all anticipate that at some level, the status quo will be preserved. And maybe the other night, somebody made a thoughtful point. The last time we were doing this, there weren't a lot of options. And so, at some level, it would be fair to say that the sending districts may have felt as though they were at a disadvantage. That is less true today, simply because Dunbarton has explored an opportunity with another neighboring community. And so their ability, whether it's actual and real, or simply that instinct, is that we're in a better position to have this dialogue with somebody who we've had a 30-plus year relationship with than we ever have been before. And to suggest that isn't true would be fallacy. It's absolutely true.
Excuse me, sir?
Yes.
So would you, would you foresee they put two articles in, one including and one not including? If Bo doesn't, then New Boston and Boston would type that? Or is that, can you do that?
Well, you know, that's an interesting question, and I think we're still sort of nibbling around the edge of the answer. I haven't found anybody yet who said, who can tell me, oh, yeah, we've seen this before. So I suspect that, and I'm not putting words in anybody's mouths, but this is a conversation, and these very kinds of questions came up when we sat down at the table last year and when we sat down at the table this year. They've sort of been put to the side, but they're very real, is how do you make this work? How do you put two choices on, and how does that affect the other parties? And do you craft an agreement that says, if then, buy? And there have been proposals for language that basically said, if then, buy. They are no longer contained in the existing work that we're doing, but how that's going to flesh out, I don't know. And I'm not sure, the only other thing to do would be for Goffstown and New Boston to craft an option B. And again, we then would find ourselves in exactly the same position that Dunbarton does with regard to giving their voters two different choices. And I think it would be even more of a problem for us, because then you have a myriad of possibilities. Then you have, let's see, Goffstown and New Boston say yes to theirs, and Dunbarton says yes to Goffstown, Dunbarton, New Boston. How do you reconcile that? So I suspect that it's a, okay, let's see what we got now, what do we need to do? But I'm not, I don't think our board has reached the point where we can make a thoughtful decision on exactly how that plays out. New Boston's proposals have also focused on some reporting requirements, as have Dunbarton with regard to, how many students are we sending there? And we want to know that with some degree of frequency, and we want to capture that in the tuition calculation, because it does, it does depend in part on daily attendance. Goffstown has taken the position that, for the most part, we have an AREA agreement that is functioning, that it does present some opportunities, as I said at the beginning, for an increase in clarity, which gives better direction to the administration of the AREA agreement. To the extent that there are things that are going to, that people's desire to have captured in a future agreement, you know, successor agreement, there's nothing that we've heard that's particularly objectionable, because it already smatches up with existing There are two significant areas which we really haven't yet discussed. We've nibbled around the edges of it, and they are the money issue. There is presently a proposal on the table with regard to what is Section 3, which obviously takes up a lot of space in the existing AREA, which spells out with an addendum attached, how tuition is to be calculated. We, there are proposals on the table, there are some counter-proposals on the table. That is going to be our next significant effort. There are also proposals on the table with regard to the rental charge that the sending districts have. Going back to, again, some of the changes, the Goffstown Board consists of nine members. The Goffstown Board has four subcommittees. Each one of those subcommittees are populated by members of the Goffstown Board. And since the inception of the present AREA agreement, there has been a provision that made seats available for each of the sending districts to be present and voices to be heard at those subcommittees. And there has been, I would say that the place that we see those communities most frequently is at curriculum and education. There are also three other committees. There are planning, what's that, Planning and Communication, Human Resources, and Admin and Finance. All of those things are as essential to the operation of our schools as curriculum and education, but I'll tell you, anybody who goes to these meetings will tell you that the most fascinating, the most interesting, is where the rubber meets the road, which is, how are we educating our students? How are we developing curriculum? What's going on in the schools? And those are all things that fall into the CNU bucket. So we have regularly seen representatives of Dunbarton and New Boston at those meetings. One of the proposals on the table at this time is that in addition to presence and the opportunity to speak, the sending districts would also like to have a vote at those tables, which is a little different, but given that both of these communities have a significant interest, because we're educating their students, even though they're Goffstown students now, in how Admin and Finance is going, how Planning and Communication is going, how curriculum and education is going, and how Human Resources is going. Human Resources is basically the policy committee now. That's really, at the end of the day, that's what we do. We make policy. That's really the impact that any school board has on its community, is development of policies for the operation of the schools, which hopefully grow out of our mission. So one of the proposals on the table is that the sending districts have the opportunity to have a vote at those subcommittees. The impact of that is that the subcommittees make recommendations to the board. The decision of a subcommittee is only as to a recommendation. It has no binding effect on the board. The board then has the opportunity to hear a recommendation, to clearly understand the under-pinnings of that recommendation, and then to make a decision on it. And ultimately, whether a recommendation from a subcommittee is accepted or rejected is the purview and sole decision of the Goffstown School Board. We would, because there are things that both of the sending districts are doing well in their schools, we would dearly like to have them at the table. They have an interest in being at the table. Having a vote is certainly a reasonable thing to do.
A vote for the subcommittee or a vote on the actual board?
Good question. A vote only on the subcommittee. We had some discussion about whether or not it was even appropriate, or you could have a vote on the board. And I think that everybody generally agreed that where you are not a member of the community and where your vote could influence the decision of the community where you're not a member, that really, we couldn't figure out a way to make it work. We would still, we would still be a 9-2 relationship, but we couldn't figure out a way to make that work effectively and for, even for a sending district to have a right to have that vote. And I think it was something that came forward as a proposal, and it's something that is not on the table anymore. And what it is resolved to is, we'd like to be there for your subcommittees. We're still sort of ironing out the details of what that could look like, and we'd like to have a vote. It may be that when all is said and done, it may end up just being, we want the opportunity to be there. Another piece of that, which is equally important, and which, for any of you who have come to a meeting before, where there have been people from all of the districts, we invite everybody to attend our board meetings, regardless of their community of affiliation, because they are parents, families, friends of Goffstown students. And so should anybody attend- And so should anybody attend the Goffstown School Board meeting as a member of the public, they're invited to comment, to offer their thoughts, to have their say in this room before the Goffstown School Board, whoever that is comprised of today or in the future. And that is something that is also important to, or we've been told is important to the sending districts. And it makes sense. Again, both of these communities have a significant interest in the operation of the schools and they are, remember, Goffstown students. Great. We did this one. We did this one. Before I jump onto the next one, have I contradicted myself or raised any questions that we haven't gone to yet? I'm going to sort of, we've touched on many of these already and I'm not going to give you a list of all the proposals. We would be here until 4:00 AM talking about all of the proposals. And to be perfectly honest, it's not that you aren't all capable of understanding what each and every one of them means or it's import. The purpose of this meeting is to tell you the things that are on the table, some of which I've already covered, and what things are still left to discuss and some of the impacts of them. We've talked about the seat on the subcommittee and vote at the subcommittee level. Is there anybody, and board as well, is there anybody who has any questions about that or concerns about that?
I do.
Go ahead.
I'm a Goffstown resident, but if I, I think if you're trying to get those two separate towns to be feel more included, you want to be inclusive in your decision making and your policymaking, why not let them have a vote on the actual school board?
Philip, you can't legally do that according to what it says.
I don't think you can do that.
Wasn't that part of the suggestions from the parents that they felt like they wanted more representation?
I understand that, but here's the difference. The community of Dunbarton elects members of that community to serve on its school board. And they don't elect members of the Goffstown community or the Dunbarton community to serve on that school board. They have no idea whether or not the, any member of the Goffstown community or the New Boston community actually shares in the same interests that they have. And while we have commonality with regard to the interests of students generally and all students because they're all Goffstown students, some of the decisions are not just student driven. So the solution for that is to make sure that we have the presence of our partners at the table where a lot of the work gets done. And a great deal of the work that gets done is in our subcommittees. It's not that it doesn't hit this table in a board meeting and get sometimes re-discussed and re-vetted. I can't remember too many cases, in fact, I can't remember a case where a recommendation has come from a subcommittee and it's been rejected. It may have gone back to the subcommittee for more work, but I don't think it's ever been rejected. So the real work that's occurring on much of the decision making here occurs in those subcommittees and comes forward to the group for ratification after discussion.
I know, it's just being represented. It's just like representation of their money, of their tuition that they're, you know, sending their students. Again, I'm a Goffstown resident, but I could understand how.
I understand it completely. And so.
Andy would fill.
Part of what we're trying to do is to figure out a way to not do something that we can't and accomplish what we would like to. The goal is to embrace, not to push away. And to get that feedback. And the way that we believe we can accomplish it, and I think that for the most part, everybody at the table has reached this conclusion, is that the way to accomplish it is through subcommittees.
With parents, again, when you get the parents' feedback, they're not quite getting, understanding that. Maybe you being on the board understand that subcommittee work, they're kind of getting a voice, but just the general parents who are going to be voting in March are not understanding that, I don't think.
And part of our goal going forward is to make sure that people do understand. A fair amount of dialogue has been had about the concerns bucket. And here is what we've heard. And a big part of it is educational. I'll be the first to tell you that a hot topic has been transitioned. How do we get a student from either a community school to the giant school district that's much larger than where the student is coming from, or from eighth grade to ninth grade?
But you're going to have that same problem if you're going from the elementary school in Dunbarton to the Boe community. You're going to have the same problem.
Absolutely. Here's the interesting thing. There was a laundry list of things that somebody thought was a really great idea. We then compared it to the laundry list of things that were already happening. In first place, this list was much longer than the proposed list. This list captured all of these things with a couple of notable exceptions that once there was some discussion around them, they ended up not being on the list. But what we were doing, which nobody seemed to know about, was far more than what was asked for. So to your point, how do we educate? How do people come to understand the things that are already gone, the good work that's going on? And part of that is what each one of the boards needs to do. So if your student is making that transition from a small, complete, smaller community school where they can turn to the right and turn to the left and recognize almost all the faces, to a much larger school where they have to go looking for a face that's familiar. So how do you deal with that? How do you accomplish that and to make it smoother? It's never going to be perfect. It's just not. And that's the nature of those kinds of transitions. But what are the things that you can do to make it smoother? And that's been part of our dialogue. And those are things that are addressed by the administration of the schools. And the interesting thing is the feedback that we got on this list, and again, I'm using it as an example because it's a good one, was, really, you're doing all that stuff? Yeah. And so as you experience this indirectly as a community, as parents, you have school board members who you have dialogue and who, you know, you can poke on the elbow and say, listen, I need to call you later, can I do it? Because I really, I want to share some information with you. And that really should percolate back here so that everybody is aware of how the rubber's hitting the road, how it's affecting students, what opportunities we might explore to make it even better. Again, it's not going to be perfect. We'd all like it to be perfect. It's not going to be, but that doesn't mean it can't be better. And the only way it gets better is feedback. I don't know anybody who ever learned anything by getting it right every time. Did I answer the question? I mean, the goal really is, the goal is. I don't know that there is for any perfect answer. Because every time the list grows, there's something else that's going to come up that will either tweak how we do something. And again, I'm talking about a specific example. But the important thing is, is there a process? Is there a mechanism for you as a parent or as a neighbor or whatever role it is, for you to get to the people in your community or in this community who are hearing these things and can act on them? Is there a mechanism to make that happen? And I will tell you that there absolutely is. Are you from New Boston?
No, I'm from Dunbarton.
From Dunbarton, okay. So I can't think of a great example. But if you were to go to a member of your board and say, look, I'm trying to get this problem addressed, or I have an issue, or I have some feedback, that really should make its way here. All these people have phones and the superintendent answers first all the time. I don't think I've ever heard of a call going unreturned.
And I'm not saying that it's always, they're great, so.
No, no, and I know they are. And sometimes, I mean, it's a job like that. I mean, there are lots of things to do and there are things that concern you that may already have been, have percolated to the surface elsewhere.
Unfortunately, not a lot of people go to the information meetings and school board meetings, you know?
We know that.
This is a full house. We're thrilled. So I keep on repeating myself. There is, under section thirteen, which we, geez, I hope it doesn't happen. There is a proposal to expand the language in that proposal to include expiration as well as withdrawal and other termination of the agreement. So that would add language to something that is not specifically addressed in the statute. Because there's a statute that governs this stuff and expiration is a word that occurs someplace in the statute, but not there. That is a proposal that we need to sort through and there's going to be some continued discussion on. There are proposals, again, which seek to foster clearly how things are going to be communicated between the receiving district and the sending district. Mostly they have to do with notices of meetings, notices to special ed coordinators, notices of subcommittee meetings. These are all things that absolutely occur between boards. The question is, is if Goffstown sends a notice of a meeting, posts it in its community, which it's required to do, and sends it out, we don't know who else it eventually reaches. We presume, because I get Dunbarton's meeting minutes, I suspect I get their post in Suet and New Boston's. So the boards have a pretty good idea, if they pick up the stuff that's in front of them, what's going on either in the meetings or in the future. And so there are proposals that really speak to better coordination and clearer coordination of giving notices back and forth. There is, Goffstown has a proposal with regard to the actual payment of tuition. Right now, as it's presently structured, because it really does make sense in terms of scheduling, Goffstown doesn't receive any tuition until the school year is, so I think the first tuition payment is due November 15th. So we've already been in school for two and a half, two and a half months. And the schools have been operating since the beginning of the fiscal year, which is July 1. Presently as it stands, there are three payments and a reconciliation. And so there's a proposal that seeks to change the phase of that so that Goffstown receives some portion in order to operate for the benefit of the students of the two sending districts. And again, that's a proposal that's on the table and we'll sit down and continue to talk about it and see where we land on it. Don't read this, it won't make sense, I'll explain it. There is, the present area agreement allows for, in the event of a withdrawal, leaves the exclusive decision making over continued attendance in the hands of the sending district. There is a proposal which is designed to make that a more collaborative decision. Because in the event that there is a narrowing of the composition of the area agreement and that there are some students who are no longer tuitioned here, Goffstown believes it should have the right to participate in the management of the students who attend its schools because there are implications for expenditures. As it currently stands, through 2014, if a sending district says, we would like to continue to send our students there, Goffstown has no choice. And that was what we agreed to and that was fine at the time. There's a proposal on the table that says, we'd like to have a collaborative decision on if, when, how many. And I don't know that it would ever change anything. At some point, it's pretty clear that a student who is in their sophomore or junior year and has the opportunity to continue on and graduate with the same students they've been in school with for the last two or three years, has a compelling interest in doing that. And it makes sense that we would too. The only thing that Goffstown seeks to do is to make sure that we, to the extent that the decisions over numbers of students have an impact on how the district is managed, that we participate in that. There was a... I'm going to try to explain this. You can't take this part and have it make any sense. One of the bills, and I'm going to try to make this as totally generic, but one of the bills that Goffstown pays is for the cost of running the SAU. The portion that Goffstown pays, and by the way, Dunbarton and New Boston also pay a portion of that debt because they have community schools. So there's a statute that says, you pay this, you pay this, and you pay this. Goffstown's portion of that bill then is passed through the area agreement on a pro-rata basis to the sending districts for the proportion of those costs attributable to those students. There's a proposal on the table which would narrow that bill by the property valuation of the district and would reduce the recoverable amount by a little less than half. That's an ongoing discussion.
Is there a dollar figure associated with that? Do you know what it is?
The impact of the proposal for both communities is about $103,000. And that's on, I think that's on the next slide. Please.
I'm just not clear, is that the last sentence of number six?
Yeah. You need to separate those two things. That last sentence doesn't belong with the top.
They don't seem to be the same.
They aren't, they aren't.
So the first section.
My daughter is a talented 23-year-old who knows how to use PowerPoint. I don't.
Okay. So the first section, it talks about withdrawal and, okay, the proposal would allow, is the proposal would allow Goffstown to effectively manage a student. What exactly does it mean? Would the students, would the Dunbarton students be allowed to continue at Goffstown or not?
Right now, under the existing agreement, Goffstown, excuse me, Dunbarton, if they had, if they left, okay, prior to the expiration, this agreement would have the exclusive decision over whether or not any or all of the students who were at the time presently tuitioned at Goffstown High School would continue to go there. So given that this agreement won't expire until 2014 and it's unlikely that there will be any change between now and June 30th, 2014, the successor agreement, simply a proposal, it doesn't say, it's a proposal, is it gives both the community of Goffstown who's receiving the students and the sending districts a seat at the table for making that decision. So we have to agree.
Okay, so that's for the future.
That is for the future. That's in a successor agreement.
So what happens, let's say Dunbarton withdraws and you have, you know, four, nine and 12 at Goffstown at the, you know, point of withdrawal. How does it work if you withdraw and the children, the students decide to stay with Goffstown? Are there any implications in that scenario?
Well, that's an interesting question.
Because per the agreement, they have the choice apparently, is that correct?
Per the existing agreement, okay, which will not be in effect at the point at which this one expires, okay, this agreement will end. So the only language that it will apply is the language of a new agreement unless, on June 30th, 2014, all of the Dunbarton students leave. And I don't think that's going to happen, regardless of what happens.
So what you're saying is that you'll craft something that will be different for the future, regardless of what the wording is in the current agreement, saying that.
And the only thing, the proposal right now seeks only to give the community, the sending district communities and the receiving district community a say in the the sending district communities and the receiving district community, a say in the decision. Right now, it is the exclusive decision of the person who's sending the student.
Okay, can I just look at this and get clarification for this? I'm just not clear.
Sure.
So it says, withdrawal, okay. "In the event of withdrawal or other termination of this agreement for any reason, existing, New Boston, Dunbarth, high school students shall, at New Boston or Dunbarth's request, be committed to graduating from Goffstown areas." So that seems very clear to me that they'll have the choice to, if Dunbarth pays the tuition to Goffstown.
Under that area agreement.
But doesn't this...
But that says withdrawal. That's what you're saying, right?
Yeah.
It's saying, "In the event of a withdrawal," so that's, which seems to me that...
It says, "In the event of a withdrawal or other termination of the agreement." The language that is being used in the discussion that's taking place right now is neither other termination nor withdrawal, it's expiration. If the, if the agreement ends, and there is no successor agreement, then there is nothing to rely on. If there is a successor agreement, the successor agreement, and this is a proposal, it hasn't even really been talked about at any great length, it's been spoken about some. There's a proposal from Goffstown that simply gives us a seat at the decision-making table, which we don't have under that area agreement. But that would be beyond 2014.
So my concern is that, so what, what I'm hearing is that the Goffstown School Board does not feel any obligation to honor this in a way that I interpret it, that a student would have the choice? That it's all up in the air, it's depending on what's around it going forward?
When we don't have an agreement, it has, it has nothing to do with honoring or not honoring it. We believe that, to the extent that the Goffstown district needs to operate its schools effective and efficiently, part of that has to do with student population. If we ink a new agreement that goes beyond this, I can't tell you what that's going to say because it hasn't been negotiated.
But that's the old agreement.
I know that, I know, but it says, it seems quite clear that they have the option to... And I'm sure that was the spirit of the language at the time, was that if something happens and there's a withdrawal, that students will have the choice to continue and graduate from Goffstown.
Ultimately, actually, I think the school board has the choice.
Absolutely.
And the school board might very well say, "It'll cost me $8,000 to go to Beau, it'll cost me $12,000 to go to Goffstown," I'm making these up. And from an economic standpoint, I'm not willing to spend $4,000 more dollars to give somebody that choice. Right now, that's their exclusive domain, okay? What Goffstown simply seeks is the opportunity to sit at the table and say, "Look, let's manage this thing together." That's all that does. It has occurred to me that there's been a suggestion that to do so would be punitive, it's not. We have a district to run, it's a proposal, it's not an absolute, by any stretch of the imagination. It has received some discussion, we are at the end of it, there's no tentative agreement on it. That's sort of where we sit right now. And that's true in many of the cases. For instance, there is no language in that agreement that speaks to the word expiration. And that, and I hear that word at almost every meeting that I'm at now. And, and so I'm not sure that the agreement speaks to the intent of somebody who's desiring to let something expire as opposed to have it other terminate or withdraw. But I, but I'll tell you that, right now, if intent is other termination or withdraw, that would be a departure from intent. So it's not at all unusual for us to find ourselves in a position where we're trying to sort through what is in the agreement, and we've done this successfully, and what is not in the agreement. And at the end of the day, the one thing that I can tell you with great confidence is that, regardless of whether you're on the Goffstown board, or the Dunbarth board, or the New Boston board, the thing that is important to all of us, and I believe the reason that we do all of this, is for students. Yes, we have a responsibility to our communities to use their knowledge wisely. But at the end of the day, we don't, we don't do this as much for that as we do it for the benefit of the students. And producing an educational experience that's valuable to them, to their families, and to their communities, whether it's Goffstown, Dunbarth, or New Boston, doesn't make any difference. Because they're all Goffstown students. So I don't believe that that's ever going to be a deal breaker. And nobody suggested that it will, and, and, you know, we haven't had conversations. But nobody's trying to push anyone forward. Just trying to have an equal set.
And I guess that's been the concern, that people have heard that if the agreement doesn't go through, and Dunbarth decides to vote Beau, and you have a sophomore or junior student here from Dunbarth that they would be eligible to continue graduating, but that's not definite.
That, actually, that depends, because, because if there's a vote in March, that's going to solve probably 50% of those questions. And that will be good for all of us. It'll be good for all of us because then we'll have sort of some security about what the aggregate looks like, about the coming in and the going out. But if there is no agreement, we're sort of in this, in exactly the same place. Because we still have to make decisions.
If, if there isn't, in, in March, if the voters choose not to withdraw, you're saying that even a year later, they could just let it expire, is that...
I'm, I'm not...
No, but I'm just saying, is that, is that kind of what I'm trying to read through the lines? I don't know, I'm just trying to follow.
No, actually, actually, you shouldn't read that into what I said. There are a variety of things that could happen. We have an agreement that expires in 2014, okay? If, as a result of the elections in March of next year, okay, nothing happens, okay? For any ver, because, because when you're talking about three different communities, four different votes, almost anything can happen. We absolutely could get to April and go, "Okay, now what do we do?" We, we literally could find ourselves in that position. And then we're sort of back to the table again. And we need to figure out, here's the nice thing. We'll certainly have a platform on which to stand. And then, in March of 14, we need to find ourselves in exactly the same position as we did in April, excuse me, March of 13, or we might have learned something from that March 13 vote that makes the March 14 vote easier to digest and to deal with. Because, because we simply don't know. I mean, we literally don't know. Because, I mean, at the end of the day, people, a lot of other people that aren't here tonight will weigh in on this issue. They'll either raise their hand or hold one.
All right, one more question. So in 2004, when the last vote occurred, this was the end result? Everyone voted to stay in the area agreement?
Everybody supported, there was a vote in favor of the area agreement, and all three of the communities, they won.
Is that a question about number seven?
Yes.
You said it resulted in about $100,000. Is that between the two towns?
No. This portion, which has to do with the, with the apportionment of the SAU expense. The SAU has its own budget. And they push that $1.5 million to each one of the communities. Each pays a portion. Goffstown's portion then gets redistributed, or a portion on a prorata basis, through the area agreement, okay? The proposal is to divide the charge that Goffstown pays so that the part that's attributable to equalized property valuation is removed, which would result in a 43.5% reduction in what we could recover. Not in what we recover, but in what we could recover. The total amount of that is about $103,000. The rental charge... Yes.
Could I have names? Could they introduce themselves?
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, you know Kristi Garrettts.
I do.
Jane Stickelech?
Jane.
Anne Carney.
Lori Wamsen. Lori Wamsen. Lori Wamsen, W-A-M-S-E-R.
Thank you very much. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Peter.
This agreement here from oh four, this was an amended agreement from years previous? Will that be what we're doing again?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. And, and that was a significant amendment over the one that lasted for about two pages.
Yeah. That's the one I know, the page and a half. Seven pages, hmm.
Okay. Nine is simply a reiteration of the portion that was on the last page, which was $1.500,000. Right, and again, for, for framework information, the Goffstown portion of the SAU budget is 71.4%. So if, if there were a dollar attributable to the SAU, Goffstown would pay 71.5 cents of it. Then, through the area agreement, some portion of that flows to the sending districts for the prorata share that they use. There, again, there's a proposal on the table that would shrink that number as sort of the base foundation, which would mean that the amount that bled through was less. Okay. Couple of different scenarios, and again, these are, are based upon things that we're guessing a little bit, and some are guessing about today, some not so much. If Dunbarth were to join Beau and perform an SAU, no longer tuition our students here, the impact on Goffstown would be an increase in their total cost of $1.5 million, and on New Boston of $604,000. Dunbarth has also taken the position, and again, this is based upon the expiration language as opposed to the withdrawal or other termination language, that it would have no continuing obligation to continue paying on the bond, on which was the capital expense for improving this structure. If Dunbarth remains as part of the SAU, okay, and we were, we were to accept this proposal and move the rental charge from 2.5% to 1.5%, the impact would be a little over $120,000. And we've already talked about $103,000. Go ahead, please.
Just a quick question.
Yep.
The impact, the tuition, rental impact on Goffstown and New Boston, does that reflect any reduction in expenses as a result of Dunbarth pulling out?
Well, that's an interesting question. And here's, here's the wrestling point. Given the number of students who are tuitioned from Dunbarth, and the spread over six grades, the likelihood of it having a significant impact, like, all of a sudden, we can actually pull a teacher up because we no longer have the need, is slim to none. Now, what it, what it may do is, because there are unequal students at certain grades, it may change the composition of classes so that, I don't know if this will lead me, but sometimes we have bubbles. We had a, we had about a three-year run where we had class sizes of like 300 or 400 students in the early part of the latest century. Hate to say that. And so we needed to make adjustments in where people were in order to best serve our students. But once that bubble was through, we could then move people back or move people around into different situations and use our resources differently. Peter.
So if I understand what, what you're saying is it's going to cost the town of Goffstown about quarter of a million dollars to stay in the agreement? We're going to pick up an extra, an extra cost? $121,000 and $103,000?
No, 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 no. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, now I understand your question, thanks. If, if both of these proposals were accepted, and they haven't been accepted or rejected, they're on the table, okay? The, the exchange would be, rather than finding yourself in a position where these two communities are shouldering two and a quarter million dollars, these would be, this would be the impact if those proposals were accepted. So yeah, that's right.
To the town of Goffstown would be, now, would, would, and the other town, we would pick up their costs of quarter of a million dollars, right?
Well, depending upon some of them, because any proposal that's on the table affects both of the sending districts, not just one.
Well, it reduces two, it increases ours, if I understand that.
Yep.
All right, we should be clear, those proposals have not been accepted yet.
Yeah.
No, I'm not, I'm just saying that's what this proposal, which is proposed.
And what we're trying to do is get some feedback of how people feel on, should we accept these proposals or not accept these proposals?
Well, actually, we're here to have a conversation about them.
So if we, if we don't accept the proposals, and Dunbarth leaves, then we're at 1.5 million?
Well, that's an interesting cause and effect relationship, but I'm not sure that I'd say those two things belong in the same pantheon. Here's why. Dunbarth has been working on developing a relationship, or a potential relationship with both. And again, Jeff, if I speak out of turn, tell me that I've done so. But I will tell you that my understanding of the work that they've done to craft an agreement is different from the work that we have done in the past. And there are things that we believe properly belong in the agreement, which Beau has not concluded properly belonging in the agreement, or they have addressed in a different manner. I would say that there are actually a couple of interesting things that we've learned from that dialogue that might be useful to us as a school district regardless of where we all end up. If we all end up together, it'll be useful, if we don't all end up together, it'll still be useful to us. Simply because of the learning process. But I don't think that you can look at this information and say, "If we do one, then we get the other, or if we don't do one, then we get the other." Because that eliminates the fact that there's another proposal on the table that needs to be evaluated if both of those items are on a warrant on Dunbarth's ballot that are going to compete with each other. That this is information that we can evaluate and that we should look at and we should consider. I'm simply telling you what the potential impact is, not that there's a cause and effect. Because I don't know that there will, because I don't know that anything, I absolutely don't know that anything that Goffstown does in developing an area proposal will have any impact at all on the vote of Dunbarth. I don't, and I don't get the details of that.
But you do know that there'll be an increase in total cost of Goffstown if Dunbarth leaves?
Right.
We know that.
Absolutely.
Because we know that if Dunbarth stays, that impact to Goffstown will be less than a link like I've already made.
Absolutely. And that's why I put those up there. Because, because it's great information.
Are there other sticking points besides the money in the ongoing area agreement discussions?
There's some theology things, but sticking points, no, because I, I think that we've wound our way through...
Because, I mean, it just seems too simple to say, "Okay, if we, if Dunbarth goes, we lose 1.5." So if we keep Dunbarth and give them the, the loss of, what, 215, why don't we do that?
But you're assuming, okay?
Yeah.
It's a good point. I wouldn't have put the numbers up there if I didn't expect somebody to say that and hope that they would, okay? You're assuming that that action produces a result that is desirable, okay? The consequence of that action, should you choose to embrace that course, is that if... The consequence of that action, should you choose to embrace that course, is that if Dunbarton voters choose to elect to go with Boe, or if the joint area agreement, revised amended area agreement, doesn't pass DOE, it never gets on their ballot, or doesn't become a warrant article, then the rest of it is superfluous, doesn't make any difference, okay? But to suggest that doing this, that accepting the proposals means yes, ignores the fact that there's another proposal on the table, that has its own merits, that is either very attractive or not as attractive, it's, you know, we've been involved in a marriage for 30 years, and there's a younger, prettier person who's entered the picture, and there needs to be an evaluation of whether that's a good choice or not. And it may be that it's a very good choice for that community, and that's not, that's their decision, okay? All we can do is try to dress up the 30-year-old and make them look a little bit better. But this is part of the evaluation of dressing up the 30-year-old. As opposed to, yeah, not 30-year-olds. And, you know, that's just, that's kind of the truth of the matter. I mean, the goal here is, is we've established a good working relationship. It hasn't always been easy. And I just want to share the point for that. It has always produced a result that I believe has been satisfactory to everybody at the table. It may not have been always what you wanted, but we've gotten the job done by sitting down at the table together. And I will tell you that the work that got done in '03, which was a giant investment by all communities, there was an enormous amount of time spent on this agreement, and by the way, it's not perfect, not even close, that we have demonstrated that we can hold off, that we can work colliding, collaboratively and collectively for the good of our students. So the question is, is do we want to continue that relationship? I do. Or do we want to do things that might make it harder to continue that relationship? And that's part of what this is about. And sometimes there are costs to continue relationships, sometimes there are benefits. And, and let's not kid anybody in the room that, and somebody already said this, it wasn't me, I just adopted it, that we're in a better position to have this conversation than we were eight years ago. That's true. Because they, there's a choice. And Dunbarton has done their due diligence.
We're in a better position, or Dunbarton?
Dunbarton.
Yeah, okay, you said we are.
We, it was the confluence. Huh. Wow. So. What other questions? Or I'm guessing that, that one of the things that, where are you from, can I ask?
Dunbarton.
Okay. So you would like to make sure that ultimately, if you have a student who's in nine through 12, that they would have some choice over whether or not they get to stay with their class?
I am interested.
Okay.
What?
Would that be a deal breaker for you?
I can't say, to be honest, but-
That's a fair answer.
It will, it'll be interesting to see how Gofftown handles it, you know, how it will, it does impact indirectly, so, you know, if for some reason Dunbarton did decide to go to Boe, I would like to think that Gofftown would be sincere and clear to existing students, not spike their, okay, it's $20,000 to go to Gofftown, your choice, it's no choice.
I, I have to believe that, that there is a body out there that would be most interested in the equities and resolving the equities, and that doesn't sound to me like it's equitable.
But Philip, we should also mention that the individual parents don't have the choice. It's up to Dunbarton's school board if they're going to allow that choice.
Yeah, and, and again, I use a kind of, I use the wildest example I could come up with, but ultimately, really, your board, if, if the choice was left with them, okay, because the area agreement doesn't leave with you or leaves it with a board, if the choice was theirs, they might very well make a financial decision that you'd want to throttle them for, or they might not.
Well, I mean, I-
I don't think they would.
I don't either, and I, you know, based on history, I have full faith in, in our board.
Me too.
And so I think if they had to say no, it would be for a period of reason, like $20,000 versus $10,000. So that, that's where, even though it's our board's decision, what Gofftown roses would be.
Yeah, ultimately, because, I mean, really, the goal of that, and I developed the language, and it was a tweak, literally was a tweak, but a very large difference to somebody who's looking at it from your end, is that to the extent that Gofftown has to manage its schools, and effectively manage its schools, it should have a voice in decisions that affect it economically. Recognizing that at the end of the day, the person who is either going to benefit or be harmed by that decision is a student.
Yeah.
So-
I feel bad for that sophomore or junior in the year 2014.
And the goal, the goal is, is not to X people out, that is not the goal. It's a goal to be able to effectively engage and participate in a violent-
But how do we go home and tell our kids that, though?
Well, we aren't there yet anyway, we, we don't have a proposal for you to go home and tell anybody about. And if you go home and tell anybody about a proposal, you've done the disservice.
But they're still talking about it, the kids are all talking about it, they're all concerned about it. You know, my son, I didn't know if it was going to affect him for his senior year, because he's going to graduate 2014, or if it was going to affect him, you know, if it wasn't going to affect him.
I guess here's the good news, we have an agreement in place that goes through 2014. We hope to have an agreement that goes beyond that, and we're working on that. Peter.
So have you considered a phase-out like West and Bedford did? Is that even in the negotiations or talks?
Well, you know, that's an interesting point. Part of that, part of the decision about whether or not to do that really rises and falls on somebody else's decision-making. I think at some point, if you reach, if you reach the end of an agreement, and there's been a decision by Dunbarton to leave, then you sit down before you get to the end, and you work on developing something.
Well, I would think-
And that's pretty simple. And either you develop it today, in, in the, in what you're crafting today, that recognizes a withdrawal, other termination, or expiration, and incorporate that into an agreement that you're working on today, or you wait for everything to sort of fall out, ignore it in the document you're working on, and then adjust for it.
Well, the only problem with that is you take some person that, if they knew their kids, their children were going to be phased out, they may vote differently than if they knew that, okay, 2014, you're out. If they thought it was a phase-out program, and somebody was in the ninth grade and moved through.
Plus Boe would have something to say about when they accept Dunbarton's students.
Sure. Right. And so, I mean, one of the interesting pieces of this is, even though there are three parties to an existing contract, and make no mistake, this is a contract, okay? If somebody says there's been a breach, they get a hearing on the breach, okay? There are three parties to this contract, there are two potential, there are two parties to the proposed contract. These parties don't have privity with these parties. These parties have no role in what these parties do. Now, ultimately, somebody else may have to go, huh, how do we make these two pieces fit together? But I don't believe that there's anything that we can do in this agreement to bind the parties to this agreement. They would have to, there has to be some link between these two. So that, as far as I've seen, that hasn't been addressed, and there's no proposal to address it at this time. We've reached the point where new proposals have all been submitted, there could be counter-proposals that, that address that, but it's a, it's a good and valid point. Any other questions? I hope it made sense, I hope it covered enough material so that you have an understanding of where we're at. Thank you for speaking to your concerns, we appreciate that. Hopefully it will help us go forward and work that much harder on crafting something that each one of the communities can bring back to its voters with a high degree of confidence that it has been a collaborative effort, that has resulted in an agreement that if accepted by the voters, will, will work for all of the communities going forward. I appreciate you taking the time to come out of your homes this evening, and bring your families along and be part of this. If you have questions, please, get back to us, get back to your board, and be heard.
Hey, you have a seat, Tom, Larry? Do you have a seat?
I don't believe that we have any other business, right?
No.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn then.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks very much.